Thank you. Mrs. Cron, would you call the roll?
Mr. Pasker. Mr. Demming.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Radomo.
Here.
Mr. Sarnice. Mrs. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Yardling.
Here.
We are now.
Here. Thank you. At this point, we will take questions and comments from guests. Please make sure that you identify yourself in terms of your name and the municipality that you hail from. We would certainly appreciate if you could keep the time of whatever you have to say to three minutes or less, and I have two names on the sign-in sheet. The first one is Brian Perry. If you would, please come to the podium, turn on the microphone, which is a button will give you the red light.
Evening. My name is Brian Perry. My wife, Megan, and I live at 211 Barn Hill Road, Percasie. It's actually Bedminster Township. We're here to discuss a busing arrangement. We have four children. We currently send our oldest son, who's eight years old, to a non-public school, to which he's taken the Penrich School Bus to and from schools for the last two years. This upcoming fall, our younger son, who will be six in the fall, is going to be attending that same school, which offers an all-day kindergarten program. And he is on the same schedule as his older brother. My wife and I both currently work. We also have two younger children that have early daycare needs. And importantly, we're here to request permission for our younger son to ride the bus in his kindergarten year. I understand that it's a district policy that kindergarteners are not eligible to ride the bus, but we're asking for an exception to this policy for our situation, and more importantly, it's really no cost to the district. It would be the same schedule, same bus route.
Mrs. Johnson, is this something we can look into because it clearly is not acceptable to policy?
I don't know that this is a decision that the board should make on a case-by-case basis. I think perhaps the gentleman could submit a request to the administration, and they can process it through and bring it to the board if they feel that it warrants discussion by the board. It is probably something they can discuss in executive session since it's a matter that concerns a student, but I'd advise the board not to hash that out about a particular student here in public.
So, Mr. Perry, are you willing to do that? To submit basically a written request?
Yes, is there a particular form? Because one of the things I was looking at, or looking at mechanism by which the district could do it, is I know there's an ultimate transportation form that looks at eligibility, but the criteria actually fits that. It would preclude, if you read the criteria to preclude kindergarteners, as a suggestion, that would be a mechanism by which the board could consider it. There's an ultimate transportation form, but again, if you read it, at least the way I read it, you're going to miss something that does not preclude kindergarteners. But yes, I would be willing to proceed on it.
I'm not aware of a form, sir, but I'm sure an email or letter will do the trick.
Okay. All right, and again, just to clarify, the only reason I'm here tonight is I was asked, I brought this issue up kind of amongst, through email. It was specifically asked to come to this meeting, and mind me, this issue, and I'll leave it at that, was brought up in January and it's taken this long to come to this point, but I'll be more than happy to address it via email. Is that, who should I specifically direct that to?
Other facilities, or the Transportation Department, I would suggest, or the Business Office. The one thing I would point out, just generally.
Yep.
Is that sometimes somebody has to be the bad guy because if the board made an exception for every family or every student, the district would become grimy to a halt. So, I am not qualified to pull forth on the merits of your request, believe me. That's for someone in the district to do initiative. But I would just say that as a general matter, and I'd urge you to submit your letter or your email to the Transportation Department or to Ms. Johnson.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. The other name here is Mary Lou Tchakowski.
Hi, I'm Mary Lou Tchakowski. I live in Percasie. I'm also a teaching assistant at South Middle School. And I have two questions, please. With reference to the health insurance rates that were spoke, talked about at the last meeting, I just wanted to verify that those rates apply not only to the professional staff but also to the support staff?
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, thank you. I wasn't quite sure. Okay, thank you. And my other question is, I would respectfully like to ask you if you could please tell us where things stand on the support staff contract.
I can answer that. Since I'm the person negotiating the support staff contract. And I don't want to negotiate in public, other than to say that the parties have met a number of times in recent weeks. We are working hard toward making progress towards a successor agreement, but beyond that, there's nothing to report yet.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on. Find your place. We will move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that board members would like to have voted on separately? And the consent calendar will include the addendum to the Superintendent's Personnel Report that was sent out this afternoon, and I believe there are four pages to that. Hopefully, it's on your desk if you didn't see it earlier. It has to do with a number of people who are being assigned to neither to new physicians or two physicians. So, do we have anyone who would like to have items on the consent calendar voted on separately? Not? Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, including items A through H on the agenda? And a second? Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Thompson to approve all the items on the consent calendar. Are there comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next, we have a new student liaison tonight. He's sitting at the end of this side of the table. Mr. Callens is someone that some of you are familiar with because he has regulated the sound, maybe regulate is the wrong word, but he oversees the sound that goes on sometimes when we meet in the high school, particularly in the auditorium. And Mr. Callens will be our student representative from the high school for this school year. Welcome, and you get to speak first.
All right, thank you, Dr. Yardl. Well, thank you, everyone. I would like to thank the board for continuing this program of student representation. I think it's a crucial part to have student representation on the level of which the board makes decisions. Just a quick addition, in addition to letting it sound, I'm also the president of Penrich Student Council, which is the position that also generally reports at school meetings. So, that's the position I'm here tonight in. A quick, a few things that Penrich High School has been up to, and it's a lot of great stuff, I have to say. On June 10th, Penrich students participated in a lip dub, for those of you who don't know, that is where the entire school gets together and lip syncs to a song. We did "Part of Me" by Katie Ferry. There's an organization called United Council, which is composed of one member from each organization at the high school came together. It was Dr. Rattigan's idea, I have to credit, just to bring unity to the students at Penrich. It's something we haven't seen for quite some time. And I have to say, as the cameraman getting bombarded with confetti, I think it went absolutely with, and it was fantastic, and I think, I mean, all the positive feedback I've gotten from Penrich students and parents and community members has been outstanding, and I think that we're going to definitely look to do something that can keep the students unified next year as well, because there's nothing that, I've never seen that kind of unity between students. For student council, we have two things that we've already begun planning. We have the annual pinkout game, pinkout football game. I don't have the date in front of me, but it will be at one of the home games, obviously. We raise money for Grandview Hospital's cancer care unit, and this is the fifth year we're doing it, and over the past four years, we've raised over $12,000 for Grandview Hospital's cancer unit. Additionally, we have the homecoming festivities. The game is October 24th, and the dance is October 25th, and more info will be to come for that. And finally, just a side note, I will be at a student council conference next month for the board meeting, so if the board is okay with it, Liam Kerr, the vice president of student council, has offered to take my place next month.
Thank you very much, and that's fine. Thank you. At this point, the president's report. I just want to say, first of all, graduation was held under 12, and it was a very successful event. I'll thank Dr. Creden and everyone who organized it. Since we were indoors at Stabler Arena, we did not get extremely wet, which we might have had we been outdoors. Students were, I thought, extremely well behaved, all 563 of them got to come on stage, had their name announced, and shake board members' hands, and my hand survived. I didn't have any bone crushers, but they got to me that evening, but yes, there's usually someone who lets up at that thing. But I thought it was a very nice graduation, and it's always a wonderful time of year. And that said, and even with the budget passed back on June 10th, I think this year is probably more problematic than most. I say that because, and Ms. Tchakowski has already referenced this, we have two outstanding contracts that we're negotiating, one of which has already expired and the other which will by the end of this month, and we're working hard on those, but we also have two agreements, one with our Act 93 staff and one with our cafeteria staff. So, in the next month or so, it will be a busy time trying to resolve as many of those or as much of those as we can. Of course, my concern that I've expressed before, I think is still very much upfront, and that is the budget in Harrisburg, which isn't, as far as I can tell, and where now the governor has threatened to hold up the budget to get his pension reform or some pension reform passed. That may bode well for the long term, but it surely does not, in my opinion, bode well for the short term because so far, we've been, we, the legislators and the governor, have been working on this process since early February, and we're, from my vantage point, nowhere close. That is a worry, only because we have passed the budget, we have made the assumptions of what we might see from the state. If the state is generous, which seems unlikely this year due to their own budgetary issues, that would be no problem. If they decide to make further cuts in things that were promised up to this point, and they did withdraw the $600,000, or more or less withdraw that recently, so that's not unprecedented. Or the other option is if they do not pass the budget until the center of the third has happened a few years, and I guess it's been almost a decade ago now, but a while back, that also proves a problem because obviously, there's money that isn't where it needs to be at that point. So, those are my comments, just my concerns as we enter the summer season, which is usually fairly quiet, but I don't think this year will be that situation. I think there'll be a lot of activity, so stay tuned. At this point, I'm sure Dr. Rattigan will do something much more upbeat than I do, so it's your turn.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Yardl. First, I'd like to thank Guth Elementary School. They were the ones that had the room displays here. Obviously, they're finished now because the school year is over, but thank you to Guth. And I'd like to thank the Bedminster PTG for their donation of an Ellison Prestige Pro Machine for the Bedminster Elementary School. And as you've already heard, the end of the school year was quite a whirlwind of activity, both in and outside of the classrooms. Many of the non-traditional events that really served to enhance the total educational experience for our students. Some examples of these include the elementary school field days, the Civil War Experience for all fifth graders in the fields outside of West Rock Hill, Penn South's Cardboard Boat Regatta in the pool, Sidewalk Talk Day at the high school, Minute to Win It for the special needs students, the Rainbow Day, and the Mud Run at Bedminster. And you heard from Nick already, the lip dub video. So, a lot of fun events that highlight the creativity and spirit that goes on here at Penrich. And as Dr. Yardl said, of course, the ultimate year-end event was the high school graduation. It was a great experience. I was very impressed with the eloquent speakers that we had from the student body, and you can see why they're going to be very successful in their future. We also had a very generous gift from the class of 2014, and in case you didn't hear, this was quite impressive. Our seniors have been awarded more than $1 million in college scholarships. So, we are very proud of them, and I'm sure their parents are as well. I had the privilege of attending the Da Vinci Day at night, where high school students presented their results of their semester-long research into an area of personal interest, passion, or curiosity that allowed them to see the connection between the real world and the seemingly isolated academic content and skills they learn in the classroom. Some students took the opportunity to raise money and awareness for causes such as autism research and anti-slavery campaigns, thanks to Mr. Allen, Mrs. Brabano, Mr. Zaplini, and Mrs. Gersh for leading this great effort. Congratulations are also in order to the eight senior football players who represented Penrich in the 39th Bob Sands Memorial Bucks County Lions All-Star Football Classic. The North won 26 to 3, as Micah Stutzman was named Most Valuable Player, and Matt Pasquali was honored with the Sportsmanship Award. Other Penrich players on the team were Mike Klass, Shane Crannick, Peter Sumiatis, Josh Beer, Ryan Anton, and Duke Montgomery. And finally, it's not just students and teachers doing remarkable things. It was very touching to find out that members of our Transportation Department personally delivered pizza and sodas to area police departments earlier this month as a way of saying thanks for helping us keep our children safe during the school year. The bus drivers also presented a check of $200 to the Percasie Police Department for its new K-9 unit. The money was raised by selling root beer floats during their annual picnic, as well as donations from individual drivers. And on a personal note, I would just like to say thank you to everyone for being so welcoming as I embrace this community. I'm very happy to be here, and thank you. I look forward to another great year. Mary, please.
Thank you, Dr. Rattigan. And it's been a busy year, so thank you for hanging in there. At this point, as I often do, I'm going to confuse the board by changing the order of the committee reports. So, we're going to move to item F, which is the Personnel Committee, and Mr. Demming, that's your responsibility.
Thank you, Dr. Rattigan. We had our last personnel meeting on the 16th. It's been a busy year personnel-wise, and we're asking to do kind of a funding, lots of involvement. I have a series of motions, 11 motions in total, so if you bear with me, I'm going to make those motions. First is a motion to approve the K-8 curriculum supervisor for the Humanities Arts Job Description, which we discussed during our 16th meeting. May I have a second?
Second. Moved by Mr. Demming and seconded by Mr. Radomo to approve the K-8 curriculum supervisor for Humanities and Language Arts, and this is actually just the job description, job description, not the person. Do we have comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Demming?
And the second motion is to approve a K-8 curriculum supervisor for STEM, Science, Technology, and Engineering, again, a job description. Does the motion?
Yes, do we have a second? Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt, to approve the K-8 curriculum supervisor for STEM, and this also is the job description. We have already approved the person, so I guess we ought to approve the job description. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next, Mr. Demming?
Motion number four, which is to approve the Assistant Director of Transportation Job Description, as discussed in our June 16th meeting.
This is motion number four, not three. So, do we have a second for motion number four? Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt, to approve the job description for the Assistant Director of Transportation. Comments or questions for board members? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. How about this number three? Mr. Demming?
I'll go back and do that. I thought I did that, but I guess I missed it. It's an age factor exposed. Motion to approve the Director of Transportation Job Description, as discussed in our June 16th meeting.
Do we have a second? Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Thompson, to approve the job description for the Director of Transportation. Comments or questions for board members? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Demming?
And this is motion number five, and this is of specific importance to us and the audience. This is the motion to appoint Kathy Johnson as our Right-to-Know Officer, as we discussed in our June 16th meeting.
Do we have a second to that motion? Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Yardley, to approve Kathy Johnson as the Right-to-Know Officer. I do have a question. Does this take effect immediately? Once we make the motion, motion, okay? Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Next, Mr. Demming?
Motion number six, which is to approve the transfer of Michelle Wiley to be principal at West Rock Hill Elementary School, effective July 1st, 2014.
Do we have a second for that motion? Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Thompson, to approve a transfer of Principal Wiley to West Rock Hill Elementary. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Demming?
Number seven is a motion to appoint Mr. Howard Vogel as principal at J.M. Grass Elementary School, effective July 1st, at a salary of $1,475 for the next school year.
Do we have a second to that motion? Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Yardley, to approve the principal at J.M. Grass. Comments or questions from board members? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Howard, struggle, you are here, correct? Do you stand up so people know who you are? Those who don't, and would you like to? Would you like to say something to us or to the community at large in your new responsibility?
I would. I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to work at Grass over the last five months. The support from the students, the parents, the staff, the administration's just been incredible. So, basically, thank you for the opportunity to continue helping make Grass grow.
Mr. Demming?
Motion number eight is to appoint Dr. Thomas Rutter as acting principal for Central Middle School and North Middle School, effective beginning of next month, July 1st, until the principal positions are permanently filled. I won't go into any more detail other than the fact that he will be splitting his time between those two schools during this period.
Do we have a second to that motion? Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Yardley, to approve Dr. Rutter as the acting principal for both Central and North Middle Schools. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Dr. Rutter, would you like to say anything to me instead of me?
I wasn't prepared to speak. I didn't dress for the occasion, but thank you very much. And I truly look at this as an investment, and what I have a lot of investment in, so I appreciate it.
Dr. Rutter, thank you for your years of service, both at first at South. It's been many years ago because my children attended during the time that you were principal there, and then it's more recently Central. You opened Central and made it a great school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Demming?
I too have two grandchildren who went to South Middle School, they both speak very fondly of you, so congratulations. And let me just also add, it's very tough to retire. Okay, the next motion is to appoint Mr. Christian Timcotten to, as principal of the Central Middle School, on his earliest availability, at a salary of $118,614 this school year.
Motion by Mr. Demming, do we have a second? Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Yardley, to approve? I'm sorry, Mrs. Schmidt, my apologies, to both of you, to approve the new principal of Central Middle School. Do we have comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Yard?
Yeah, I'm just wanting to know what the earliest availability date is.
You know Mrs. Yardley because Mr. Timcotten would have to put in his letter of retirement, but I think the latest would be 60 days.
Any other comments or questions? So, if not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Timcotten, I gather you're the other person sitting in the principal row back
I'd like to thank the board, Dr. Rattigan, the administration, for entrusting me with this great responsibility and honor, and I'd also like to, you know, just let you know that throughout this process, all my conversations, every interaction, has made it so clear that the Penrich administration and community is so dedicated to the education and the academics, social, emotional health of their students that I couldn't be more excited about this position. And also, I'd like to thank the board for providing for the previous motion because the conversations that I've already had with Dr. Rutter, his passion for the school and the school district is amazing, and he will make the transition so much better than could have possibly been. So, that's, again, showing the board's dedication and administrations to their students and to their school. And as far as the timeline, I will start working that out with my current school district in North School as of tomorrow, but just so you know, the transition period begins tomorrow because I will be going to work for half-day, taking half-day, coming down with Dr. Rutter and meeting the staff. So, the transition will begin prior to that initial start date, so as soon as we possibly can. I can't wait to get to know the students, the staff, the community. I'm very excited.
Welcome to the long-distance commuter's crew. I wish you hope your time on the north extension is more productive.
I forgot to prepare a joke though.
Mr. Demming?
Motion number 10 is to appoint Priscilla Honis as the acting principal at Guth, effective July 1st, until that position is filled, permanently filled. She will be compensated to source four teachers at a rate of $400 per day.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion? Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Yardley, to appoint Miss Honis as the acting principal. Comments or questions for board members? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor? I'm sorry, Mrs. Yard?
I'm sorry, I just had a comment. I just want to say Miss Honis was, I guess she was the principal at Sellersville and Siler, and was she somewhere before that?
West Rock Hill.
West Rock Hill, and then she was the acting principal at Grass for several months this past year, so I think it's great she's going again because that'll be her fifth elementary school. But she has a lot of dedication to the Penrich school, so.
Anyone else want to come? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Demming?
Thank you for this, Dr. Yardl. This is the addendum on the Superintendent's Personnel Report, the next motion to accept this addendum.
It's the whole report.
Excuse me. Do I say?
It turns out that the Superintendent's Personnel Report is not on the consent calendar. No. It's on your?
I got it here, this one, which I got when I walked in, so if it's already been done by time.
No, no, that's.
Oh, that's, I mean.
Yes, but it's not just what's on your table tonight, it's what's also somewhere in our packet that was delivered to us. So, it's a whole.
Yes, okay.
It's not the addendum, it's the Superintendent's Personnel Report.
So, the motion is to, the motion is to approve Superintendent's Personnel.
Do we have a second to that motion? Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Thompson, to approve Superintendent's Personnel Report. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Demming?
I believe I didn't get this next one correct, but our next personnel meeting is scheduled for September 10th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to activities, which is Mrs. Miller.
Do I just have one question for the board? Motion to approve overnight field trip proposal for Penridge High School members of student council, PAC Susquehanna Gold Leadership Conference in July 27th to August 2014 at Susquehanna University in Southen Grove, Pennsylvania. Do students have the attention?
Do we have a second to Mrs. Miller's motion? Moved by Mrs. Miller, seconded by Mr. Demme to approve the student council trip to the PAC Susquehanna Gold Leadership Conference. Comments or questions from board members? If not, Mr. Talbott, do you have a comment or a question?
This will be the one that I'll be going to.
I assume you are going. Have you been there before?
I have not, but Liam has.
Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries seven zero. So I believe you'll be able to come back and give us an update in August.
I'd be glad to.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Miller?
The next activities committee meeting is scheduled for September 10th, 2014 at 7:30 PM right here at D A O.
All right, thank you. Next is academic performance. I do not have a motion or motions to bring forward tonight. I will touch briefly on the meeting that we have had on June 3rd, yes, June 3rd, 2014. Really, there were two topics there. One was the changes that are forthcoming to the gifted education program at the middle school level. Those are somewhat extensive, I believe. They involve both push-in and pull-out programs, some new teachers, two of whom I believe we appointed tonight, who will be working with those students. We also talked about virtual high school courses. We had two students here that night who were applicants of offering virtual high school because that would give them a chance to take the AP European History class that we offered but did not get enough people to participate in and not lose that opportunity. It will also be something that Latin students will have the option to avail themselves of. So those were the primary topics on the agenda that night. We will have another academic performance committee meeting this summer, and that will be August 18th, and it will be here in the D A O at 7:30 PM. So at this point, we'll move on to facilities, since Mr. Casper's chair is empty. I believe Mrs. Schnitt has graciously been sort of hyped, shent high into doing this report, so Mrs. Schnitt.
Thank you, Dr. Rennell. The facilities committee met on June 10th, 2014, and there are several motions, the first being a motion to accept an awards bid as listed below. I believe there was a request to do A through E.
So you're making a motion to...
Motion to accept the award bids listed below in A through E. Won't you make a separate...
No, I don't think so. Everybody should have a copy of these on the agenda, this is item 1A through E on the facilities section. Do I have a second to that motion? Moved by Mrs. Schnitt and seconded by Mr. Demme to approve and accept bid awards for items A through E. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Mrs. Schnitt.
Motion to accept an award bid on the band trailer, bid 15-129, Berkholder Manufacturing Incorporated for $19,154.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Schnitt and seconded by Mr. Thompson to approve the band trailer in the amount of $19,154. Comments or questions from board members? I will say that I would like this to be tabled, I think that we need to have further discussion on this matter. I am concerned about the cost of this in conjunction with the pickup truck, which is the following motion, item G. I personally believe that the band ought to contribute something toward that, so that would be my request. I don't know whether other board members, how they feel, but I would like to offer a motion to table this tonight.
I actually, I have a question too regarding at our previous meeting, board, special board meeting, there were questions raised in regard to funds that were committed previously in previous years for band uniforms, $20,000, and it was brought up that uniforms weren't in on time, so warm-up suits, approximately $8,000 was purchased for the band, so part of my question is, in conjunction with what Dr. Rennell's saying, if there was to be a contribution by the PMA, that $20,000 was committed, they spent $8,000, so is there still $12,000 available with PMA? Can that be part of a contribution to go towards this?
Mr. Demme.
I wonder if she's going to, is Mrs. Schnitt going to withdraw her motion?
Well, I'd ask to table, so we either have to have a second for the table or the table document.
I will second the table.
Okay, so then we'll move on the table motion unless, well, let me ask for comments or questions on the table motion first. Mrs. Yardley, you're looking...
Well, my question would be, is there a timing issue on this? How long do we expect to get an answer back on the issue of whether there are funds contributed and how long it's going to be brought back at the next, the next meeting? If that's, is that timing...
If I recall, and I don't have, well, you've got the schedule somewhere here, there is a facilities committee meeting in mid to late July, prior to the board meeting, so it would be something that could be voted on in July 28th, board meeting, and discussed prior to that at the July 23rd, I think is the date.
Is that committee at all where all of the committees are...
Yes, and it would be more than just facilities, but it would be something that would be subject to discussion there.
I have a question, how long does it take to get the band trailer approved?
Well, we, minimum.
Mrs. Johnson.
You don't know?
Mr. Benson said... Did you say 12 weeks?
Yes, ma'am, the original people we got, the quote, our original quote for 15,000 from, said there would need 12 weeks for construction. I don't know, based on the bid we received, the one bid we received, what the timeframe would be, but I assume it would be somewhat similar in timeframe.
All right, even if we voted tonight, it would come the end of September.
Yes. Well, at least if the 12 weeks holds true, I mean, with quotes like that, my experience is from a private sector that sometimes people beat the quote significantly, and I know a few vendors who don't even meet the quote timeframe, so I think, you know, it would be in the falls, which that, I would interpret that number to mean, not necessarily that it would come September 23rd, whatever the 12-week timeframe for tonight is.
Yeah, I have, you know, another question because of the, I believe it was the July 10th of the facilities meeting, Dr. Radigan said that the PMA was asked about money, and they said there was none, but in the, in their end-of-the-year report, I mean, there was $27,000.
And I ask that you retain, refrain from that kind of comment. Dr. Radigan, are you able to give us enough information before the 23rd such that we could do that better in terms of knowing what the finances are, for instance?
I could certainly try to see if I could get information from the group for you in advance.
I also had a question about injuries. Mr. Benson mentioned at the last meeting injuries, so I asked Dr. Radigan about that, and then she got some information today. And I guess I would, I mean, I guess I would like, I mean, having that information, I would like more information, I would like years, several years back as well, maybe five years, and I would like to know the injury, whatever injuries related to the band for the past five years, that's what I would like to know, whatever was reported. How are injuries usually reported?
Mrs. Johnson, do you want to explain what method they're supposed to use?
Yes, injuries are to be reported through Mrs. Tenna at the high school now, she then transfers those onto our, our department, and then they are forwarded onto our transfer company. So that's how injuries are typically reported to the schools.
I would just like more information about that because it was mentioned, and so I would like to know what the injuries were, you know, were they reported, and then not just this past year, but years past, so if there was some sort of pattern.
I have a question. How many injuries are acceptable? Is there, is there a benchmark for how many injuries have to occur before we consider a trailer? That you need to go back five years? I don't know why this is, I don't know why this is based on injuries, I guess that's what I'm asking, why you need five years of a history of injuries?
Well, it was brought up, so I would like more information. Mr. Benson brought it up, so he said because, you know, he said there were injuries this past year, so I then, and it's been, and there also were other parents who came to the meeting saying that the trailer or the truck could cause injuries, they didn't mention that there hadn't except for somebody whose pants were ripped, who got their pants caught on the lift, but that there were no injuries, and now there's injuries mentioned, so I guess I just would want information because it has been tied to the trailer. I don't know, I'm sure there's injuries in every sport that happens, so, but now it's been brought up, so I would like more information. I don't say that there's an exact number, I can't say that.
And has the district satisfied all possible combinations of, because this is a $50,000 decision, we include the $31,000 for the truck. The bigger problem is the truck, the way I see it. Apparently, burglies have said that they will not modify the truck. The problem is that we have apparently, according to facilities, according to the JAP, we have really no other need for this truck other than this purpose. Is there any way that we can find an order, a solution to the problem?
Demme.
Well, I think the number of questioning here has had credence to your suggestion that we delay this.
Anyone else before I call the question on the table motion? Mrs. Schnitt.
I just want to comment, I mean, on the injuries, of course, any injury regardless of how major or minor should be of a concern to us. I don't think any of us are questioning that, but it has been brought up in the past, but at the July 10th meeting, I believe it was July 10th, it was noted that in a way that this is a bigger problem, and now it's coming to light to us, as in the email today, that there's specified numbers. We really hadn't heard specifically about that. Like Mrs. Yardley said, we heard about, I believe it was a parent who commented when the drum line was loading things and the students' pants got caught. Of course, that should never be ignored. I can say personally, and I don't know how it's been addressed because I know it's come up at several meetings, who should be loading, who shouldn't be loading, who should be operating this truck and who shouldn't. But on the evening of graduation on June 12th, when I was leaving that night, I stood and I watched two students load two drums onto the lift of that truck and stand there and hold those drums while a parent operated the lift as was indicated should be done. Now, those students rode the lift as it moved up, and then they rode it as it moved down. Now, in my opinion, that's unsafe. If you put a drum on there and the drum falls off, it's a loss we can incur. A student falling off a lift is not. So I think there's a lot of questions as well that need to be answered here, not only in regard to, is the truck in general safe? And nobody's questioning whether an injury is worthy of being considered, I don't think, but are we following the rules that have been set forth that should be followed in use with this truck? I mean, at that meeting too, in regard to the trailer, it was stated that the trailer is also used, and not just by, would be used by Penridge Band in this way, but by other schools, that they get on top of a trailer and direct. Now, I'm assuming, and maybe I shouldn't assume, that that would be the band director, but how do we know that it's not a student at some point? Is that safe? To me, no, it's not. How do they get up and down off of that trailer? That's a question of mine. So I think there's a lot of questions, and I don't think anybody's discounting injuries here. I know I'm certainly not, be it whether it's a scratched finger or an injury that requires stitches. I don't think that anyone's making light of them.
Yeah, I just want to add, actually, I think that it's actually the students who conduct because it's the drum majors.
I can clarify those questions for you, if you want some clarification, I am here.
Mr. Benson, yes. You would?
Yes. First of all, as my second, it's me in my second year at the high school, when we have an injury, we go to the trainer. We, I was informed of the usual process of going to the nurse for an injury after the season ended this past year, so we don't use a trainer, they have our medical information, and that's the way we communicate with the school district. So after I hear from Kathy Johnson, the process we should be using, we have not had any injuries to use that process, but that's the one that will be used. I can't speak to the previous years. All I can speak to is the ones we've had. Most injuries that I tried to communicate with Dr. Radigan today are bumps, bruises, an ankle bump here and there, it's, one child leaped off of the edge a little too soon, and you know, he just stubbed his toe, so it wasn't a serious injury. There was one serious injury on a trip last year where we were using a truck, similar to what he used, where it was a laceration that required some assistance. Dr. Crichton was contacted immediately and notified of that problem, and we were in touch with the parents immediately and solved the issue. In terms of this new trailer, I have to say, the director is the one who will be standing on top of that, you know, and I, believe me, I would not be hanging up on something eight feet in the air if it wasn't going to be safe. Students would not be allowed on top of a trailer like that, I would not be having someone do that. We already have podiums that they use, they bring them to about four to seven feet off the ground. So we're looking at actually getting different podiums that have helmets for that. So the injuries that we were talking about, you know, anytime you're moving, like I said, anything up that distance, not that much equipment, it has been said that the adult has to actually be working, usually it's the truck driver that works, the actual lift, it wasn't a parent, I think it was a truck driver, who used the lift, and yes, it's true, students are on the lift studying how this moves up and down because those wheels don't have locks. And so that's part of the situation that we were looking at there. And seriously, any of the questions you would have, I'm always available and open to answering any of those questions. Again, the reason that I suggested this was primarily for safety, and we're trying to make this as safe as possible. Mr. Waltham raised on the night of alleviating as many possible problems as we could, given the short-term issues we had this year, and he certainly invested some time and money, but that's, again, that truck will not last forever. We're trying to have a long-term solution, the reason why we put the specs in there is because currently, when we teach the band also, we can't see what the band does until the judge tells us in the first competition, so I am hoping the design specifications is fully to stand on top of it so we can actually evaluate to see if the band is doing what it should be. That's, that was one of our biggest concerns, and we're trying to use the one solution to solve many, many problems. Normally, there's some kind of a tower people would stand on to observe the band, to teach the band properly, we don't have that, and that's fine, that's why I was trying to add that one aspect into the design factor. I cannot speak to, you know, what kind of monies the PMA is putting forth, other than the fact that, you know, I think we, Dr. Radigan, I think you know who the PMA board is, I believe we, they've given that information to you, I would reach out to them to give more clarifications to the numbers that you're using. I can't, I'm not sure of the numbers myself, to be honest with you, so, but I think that I understand that the budgetary concerns, and all the issues that we're dealing with with the band. This is a program in growth, and we just got done with our initial recruitment phase, the marching band stands at 165. So we had 135 last year, now we're at 165. That is a huge shot, but we haven't really made that many follow-up calls, so by the end of the month, we may have a different number. So the band is in growth, and I think that when you look at how much material we're going to be carrying back and forth, that's primarily why we need to do this. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions. As far as the injuries are concerned, I'm not sure, I don't know what happened before, but I can give you approximation, I cannot give you an exact number, Mrs. Yardley, exactly what the injuries were. We have a nurse on staff with us at all times, and it's the moment that happens, there is medical, medical information for that child, the parent's contacted, and the nurse is there to treat any issues. We would not have to call an ambulance of any kind or call for paramedics, but we have a specific process that we use. There's a trainer at any football game, so we go and we use a trainer for that as well. Any other questions so far about some of the things you mentioned, specifically safety?
Well, I have a question about, you said that the band is growing, so is this trailer actually bigger than the truck? Does it hold its capacity bigger than...
The thing is, the truck has spaces tall, but it's very difficult to use the height of this. The trailer can be used so that in each side, there are actual shelving units that you design to put it in, plus we can put the actual thing that pulls the pit on stage also on the trailer. We don't have to have a separate trailer, right now, we are relying on a parent to put our golf cart, which pulls that whole pit in the front, on and off the field quickly, he takes on the responsibility... He takes on the responsibility of pulling it himself. He's not even a district employee. Right now, the way this trailer is designed, it can carry everything we're going to need all at once. So all of, go ahead, District Board, I'm sorry.
I didn't mean to say the cart also?
Yeah, the cart is designed, the whole cart as well, so we don't have to have a separate, we're not relying on a separate driver who's not a school district employee of any kind. There's, you know, they take on the responsibility, and that's what we're looking for. Liability for taking that golf cart for us. That's the way we get around on an off-field. And it carries injured children, you know, if there's like, for example, if a kid who has a sprained ankle and they're still in a uniform, they ride out off the field on that golf cart as well. So yes, it is bigger. I think we can probably use more of the space. You know, Mr. Loffler's staff has a nice job putting shelving units in there. We haven't used that, but it's only, well, five feet deep. There's a way we make it work, and certainly it's adequate, but if the band starts to grow more, if we're at 165, now, I'm not sure who's, is that kid going to show up on August 11th? You never know. But if they all do, I mean, this band is going to grow further. So we have 60 freshmen interested in being part of the marching band. If that trend continues, our space considerations are going to keep them growing.
How many uniforms do you have?
We currently own 150. So we ordered early requests that we gave about two years ago. Mr. Johnson, I can clarify. When we put in the bid for the initial set of uniforms, it was for 150 upfront plus expansion over the next three years. So we put in two levels of expansion, we made 70 more uniforms. Now, it's 220 for 160-some-odd equal. The color guard, I think, is around 20, so we would need 148 uniforms approximately. So, believe me, you know, we don't, we can't just get the exact size uniform for a kid. You've got to have a certain set to fit that number of kids, because you wouldn't believe during Memorial Day parade, this kid Ben gets up there, and I swear to God, he grew about six inches this year. And I'm not kidding. So it was just that morning, trying to find something that fit him, it was hard. So we have to have, we think and we hope we've had that problem solved.
So you do have enough?
We will, a little area will be happening. Mr. Johnson, I think it's going to be the third week of August, I believe. Norad, right? Mr. Johnson?
I'm not quite sure about the date, but they've ordered.
Yeah, we, we did, the deal with Johnson was instrumental in getting that done for us, which is great. Because otherwise, it takes about 160 days, we wouldn't have the performance, so.
I just, I want to point out that I am a member of PMA, because my daughter is in the band, and I did reach out to the PMA officers last week to ask them about the money, and they said they couldn't meet until after July 6th, so. Actually, the president, and she said I would have to meet with the whole board, so, as a PMA member, so wait in here.
Mr. Benson, will you be available on the 23rd of July?
Mrs. Benson will be available. Mrs. Benson says I will, so.
I certainly ask, because if this discussion is held there, then it would be helpful.
I would be happy to. And if anyone has any questions ahead of time, you know, I'd be happy to talk or email if you need some information. So as far as your request for detailed description of all the injuries that we've had the last five years, I have to say that we probably will not be able to provide documentation per se that you'd like to see. I have exactly this, ma'am. I talked to our nurse who was there. She gave me an approximation, and Mrs. Berry, I'm sure you've seen, and a couple others too. So I'd be happy to. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the information. At this point, I'd like to call the question. The question on the table is a motion to table, Mrs. Schmidt's original motion to approve the trailer, the bid on the trailer. So all those in favor of table, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So we have, Mr. Regalma, aye or nay?
Aye.
So we have one, two, three, four, five ayes and two nays, so the motion is tabled. So this will be revisited presumably on the 23rd and 28th. Mrs. Schmidt?
Okay, the motion then to accept an award bid for letter G, district-wide pickup truck with trailer hitch, and don't have the dollar amount, mine.
It's $30,000 and change. I saw that somewhere.
If I can just comment, the dollar amount was not put in. There was information regarding whether we were going to trade that truck in or not, so I thought we would be having that discussion this evening. Mr. Loffler, do you have the trade-in?
Not going to buy the trailer, but going to buy the truck. The trade-in amount for the band truck is $3,500, $3,500. And that would be off the $30,000 original cost of the truck.
Would you, I mean, it's not a lot of money, so would you recommend keep, I mean, would you have a use for the truck, or would you recommend trading it in?
No, for that money, I would recommend keeping it. Technology is put more interest in, in getting that truck, the laptops that they've been getting and will be getting in the future, that you're going to need a truck. They could use our bread truck, but if that's available for, to get rid of $3,500, I would keep it. It would be used.
And you said at the last meeting, you put around $10,000 into it over the past year?
About $7,600 presently.
Are you have made a motion, Mrs. Schmidt?
I did.
Did you want the dollar amount then? The dollar amount of vehicle would be $30,846.50, and that would be with no trade-in.
There is a motion for Mrs. Schmidt, and we have a second for that motion. Second. Moved by Mrs. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Thompson, to award the bid for the district-wide pickup truck with the trailer hitch for, presumably with the intention of pulling the band trailer. Do we have comments or questions on this motion? Mr. Thompson?
This is the first I've heard that there's another use for that vehicle that we currently have, because my question really was less on the trailer, which I think is an absolute necessity for the band, it's more, if there's any way to do a better job of the cost of the truck. And now that I secretly have a possible alternative use for the truck, I'm more in favor of supporting this decision.
Mrs. Johnson?
I think I need to correct, Mr. Thompson, just want to make sure that the truck that Mr. Loffler was referring to, that the technology department would be using is the old truck, not the new truck?
No, I understand that.
Okay, so let me check.
Mr. Loffler, what is the delivery time on this truck? I assume, short-term as opposed to 12 weeks?
It wouldn't be short-term. July 1st, we usually get a purchase order out. We could have it by the end of July.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Is it being ordered, or is it being ordered to our specifications, or is it a truck that, you said it's from?
Penske, I believe. Yeah, I'm not sure. It's typical pickup 2,800 GMC, so it should be on the lot. They would just have to put the trailer hitch on, a few other items that we purchased with it.
Could you go to the podium, please? I can't see you and I can't hear you.
I have one other question.
Okay.
If we're holding off on the band trailer, which I believe previously, we were told the truck would only be used for this trailer, that there was no other purposes? Or is that correct, that the school district will be using? Yeah, thank you.
Well, as explained in the facilities meeting, we really don't have a use for the truck. We're putting a plow on it just in case one of our maintenance trucks does break down in the wintertime. If it's going to be here, it will be used one way or another. We're not going to set it in a parking lot and not use it for a month, so we will find a use for it if it's here.
Thank you. I guess then my question is, do we hold off, do we table the truck until we decide on the trailer, since the primary use is for the trailer?
My answer would be to that, my personal answer would be yes, since the truck is not the limiting factor. It sounds like the truck can be here in four or six weeks, and the trailer will be 12 weeks or something on that order, so the limiting factor will still be the trailer, as I understand the conversation. Mrs. Miller?
I need some clarification. I'm like totally confused now. So are you saying we're going to put a bid up for this truck, but not the trailer? And the truck is used for the band, and so is the trailer?
Both bids were here to be awarded tonight, if you so choose. We've tabled the first part, which was the trailer. The motion is now on the floor to approve the bid for the truck. We can do that, or we could table the truck as well, and that would be my recommendation.
So the motion out there right now is still to vote on the bid?
For the truck.
For the truck?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. Mr. Deming?
It seems to me that there has been enough confusion about this thing that we have taken time to look at the whole dog.